All right, court's back in session. It's ten twenty-three AM and we're back on item number nineteen, the Budget Workshop. And we'll start with sub item number A, Harden County retirees. I believe everyone has a copy of a letter that we received from, signed by several Harden County retirees. This was brought to me by Nancy Neal and Judge Simpson. I see Judge Simpson is here, but I don't see Nancy. She was, she was planning to be here, I know. We might be a little earlier than we told her, because we told her it'd probably be around ten thirty. But has everybody had a chance to read the letter that we received? I know there's a lot of retirees here this morning, is there anybody here this morning that would like to speak or address the court on behalf of the letter that was submitted to us? Is everybody familiar with the letter that we received on behalf of retirees?
No, I don't, I'm not.
I didn't get it.
Okay. How about if I just read it?
All right.
Says, "Attention County Judge Wayne McDaniel," and it's also addressed to the Commissioners' Court. "Please accept this letter as a request to consider a pay raise for the retirees of Harden County. The last increase was approved in two thousand eleven and implemented in two thousand twelve. We understand the court would only like to consider a pay raise every five years per Commissioner Kirkendall, so this request is in line for discussion. Our loyalty and dedication to the county is evidence. Please also consider helping the retirees with twenty-plus years of service on their insurance premium. We understand that the court recently voted to pay three-quarters of the insurance for retirees with thirty-plus years of service, so basically they were given a raise of sorts." We would appreciate your sincere consideration, and there's at least a dozen signatures on here. And it looks like there are some who just gave their permission to put their name on here that didn't actually sign it. So everyone has a copy of that, and is there anyone here that would like to address the court on behalf of the retirees?
Well, I'd like to say this.
Yes, sir.
On speaking on behalf of court, really, it was relaying the recommendation from TCDRS that Ralph, who is our representative, represented to me that it's about every five years that you reach back and grab a COLA and it brings everybody up to that standard. So even though my name's on there for the recommendation, that really comes from TCDRS, and I want to clarify that. That's not my opinion, that's the recommended opinion of the Retirement Board, so.
Probably should just say, "Per discussion with Commissioner Kirkendall."
Yeah, right.
All right, does anyone wish to speak or talk regarding the letter? If Nancy comes in and she'd like to speak about it, we'll be glad to come back to this. Does anybody else on the court like, would like to speak on this item? Just so everyone is aware, in our previous Commissioners', our Budget Workshops that we've had regarding the fiscal year seventeen budget, we have not had up until about thirty minutes ago our figures from the Appraisal District. And let me back up, Angela and I received those on Thursday from Ms. Stevens. The court, as a whole, just received them this morning right before Commissioners' Court started. So we've not had a chance to review that or go over it yet, but we do plan to have future Budget Workshops to talk about salaries. The proposed budget that'll be filed at the end of this week will not include any across-the-board salary increases for anyone. So we will file a final budget in September, and that will, any changes that are made between now and then, we'll discuss those at future workshops. And we do have one scheduled for August first that we haven't set firm yet, but we plan to do that before we leave this morning. And that should be at nine o'clock, and that'll be next Monday morning. And we will keep those posted on our website, if anybody has any questions, feel free to call in. And feel free to come back to those workshops, we'll talk about salaries and increases. And we will also discuss the COLA in more detail at that time, once we've had a chance to go over all the figures and know exactly where we stand as far as revenue and expenditures for fiscal year seventeen. Does anyone else have any comments?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Cooper?
Uh, thank you Judge. I think probably the last time, if I understand it correctly, that a COLA was actually looked at or implemented, the only member of the court that is still here is Mr. Pellet. And if I understand it correctly, I have talked briefly in past during Budget times with Commissioner Kirkendall in reference to the way that this has been financed in the past. And actually, a COLA increase would, would be just like us going out for a certificate of obligation. It, it shows as our debt. There, there's nowhere in our budget that I can find, other than in our outside audit, that actually shows anything to do with the COLA. So I think you have an option, or we as a court have an option, if we consider a COLA of either taking it out of contingency to cover it or financing it. And we still have outstanding debt in this, in this area already, and it's pretty significant. So I think because we have so many retirees here today that have taken time out of their schedule to come, that we should address this today instead of putting it off later.
Okay.
Well, I was on the court the last time we was able to give a raise, and I think we did it out of, out of surplus. When we just paid for it upfront, I think it was a hundred ninety thousand then, so.
There's no way, just like the judge just got through saying, we have decided to talk about restructuring salaries and talking about pay increase and everything, there's no way we could actually sit down and put a pin to it right now, because like he said, we just got these numbers. But to address it today, we couldn't give anybody a yes or no, are we gonna give our retirees a raise? Are we gonna look at it? But like I said, because all of y'all have taken time out to come today, I think that y'all should know at least where the court stands on this. Once, once our numbers is getting in, coming in, we see where we're at, and we start looking into salary increases, this court will definitely address our retirees. And we, we appreciate all the time that each and every one of you has put into the county, and we'll do everything within our power to make sure that we do what we can to take care of everybody. I mean, one day, hopefully, each one of us will be in, in y'all group, where we'll be sitting out there talking to the Commissioners. Something else that's on here is, please consider helping the retirees with twenty-plus years of service. Would anybody that's in the audience like to address that? I know the judge had formed a committee last year during Budget Workshop to look into, to this, and we come up with a three-quarter, where, where the county increased from fifty percent to seventy-five percent on thirty years or more, but now there's a request here for twenty. What, what is the consent, Judge, do you know what the consensus is on what the request might be?
No, sir.
Was you on that committee, Mr. Roberts?
Sorry, again, what were you asking about the consensus of the, of what it was at twenty?
From the retirees, they're asking that we look into a increase for insurance for twenty-plus years of service, and I didn't know exactly what they had in mind on that. Are we currently paying fifty?
Fifty, and then thirty's twenty, uh, three-quarters, seventy-five percent.
I think it was maybe the thirty years or more go to pay all of it, and then the twenty years and more go to the seventy-five. I think that's what it was.
And at the time we did this last year, Ms. Debbie with Human Resources gave us a list of employees or retirees that actually fell into that category. Right off the top of your head, do you know how many employees we have in twenty years or better?
Not off the top of my head, I'd have to look at that.
I would say there would be significant more than there are for thirty, of course, but, yeah. And we're paying, Nancy, I see that you just walked in. My, my question was, and nobody seemed to answer, there, on, on this letter that y'all submitted, it asks us to consider increasing the insurance premiums for twenty years or plus, what, what's the request? We're, we're currently at fifty on those, fifty percent.
I think that's what they'd be satisfied with, to get the same amount as the ones with thirty percent, thirty years.
So in other words, going to seventy-five?
Yes, sir.
Okay. You wasn't in here whenever I explained it, but the judge explained it also. We just now got our numbers from the Appraisal District to see where we're at on our tax rate. And once we start looking into salaries, raises, or leaving it the same or whatever, we will address this. But because we've had so many retirees to show up today and take time out of their schedule, we just, I wanted to make sure that we let y'all know that we are gonna look into this. We can't give a specific number right now, because we don't know where we're at, but we will stay in contact with y'all.
Well, I think most of us feel like, I mean, you're giving retirees that have insurance, that continue the insurance with the county. Basically, you have given them a raise.
Yes, ma'am.
And that's all we're asking for, is to be looked at, and the retirees that do not have county insurance, to be given the same amount.
Once, and, and I'm sure Ms. Debbie could give us that figure too, of how many of our retirees do not participate in that, of course, once they get to a certain age and become eligible for Medicare, that we don't pay it anyway. But on, once we start, you can give us a list of how many are actually participating, how many is twenty and how many is thirty?
Yes.
Uh, Judge, I don't have anything else, I just wanted to make sure that.
You got a question?
Yes, sir. Anybody else on the court have any comments before we move on? And we're not moving on, I just mean to move on to Mr. Rachel. Yes, ma'am.
I just want to make sure that, that we're not losing the dental, even af- after sixty-five, that's still intact, right?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
And our life insurance.
Then when life.
The liability of keeping on with our life insurance, that's still intact?
Yes, ma'am.
The only thing that would go away, if I understand it correctly, is the health insurance, that the county's not contributing to.
Yeah, we're not looking to make any changes as far as removal or taking away of any benefits. While we're looking at, and what we were planning to discuss today, Nancy, we got started a little earlier than I think we notified you. So, but I did tell everybody that when you got here, we'd come back to you.
Did you do that because you didn't want to hear?
Oh, no, no, I told everybody that when you got here, we were gonna come back to you. So would you, other than the information you already gave Commissioner Cooper, do you have anything else that you would like to present to the court?
No, we just want the court to really consider it, because some of us have, well, twenty-plus, thirty-plus more years. We have dedicated service to this county.
We agree.
And we're not asking for anything that we don't feel like that should be not, not to be considered.
We understand, we're just not able to make a decision on that today.
We understand.
But we are gonna have other workshops after this one. We, we should have one on August the first, and then I'm sure we'll have a couple more after that that will be posted on our website. If anybody would like a phone call or to call in and ask, we'll be glad to, we're not trying to sweep anything under the rug or anything like that. And when I did mention earlier that we were moving on, the rest of the items that we had to talk about on here has to do with retirement and retirement benefits. And so we, I didn't want everybody just to leave after just a minute or two hearing me say not much. We are gonna continue to talk about budget and retirees and what the, our retire plan, retirement plan and things like that. So we weren't just moving on and getting away from this. At any time that y'all have anything, we'll be glad to hear from you as well. Does anybody have anything else they'd like to say in the audience or on the court? All right, well, we'll move on to item B, Debbie Mendes Alvo, Discussion Regarding TCDRS Plan Assessment for Twenty Seventeen. And I believe we all have a printout from Debbie. Is this it?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
First of all, with the retire, retirement, for our twenty sixteen plan, right now we're paying retirement plan rate of thirteen point nine-nine percent. And we, I'm sorry, fourteen point oh-five percent. And point two-eight on our group term life, which is fourteen point three-three percent. For the new twenty seventeen year, we are, our total contribution rate is retirement plan rate of fourteen oh-five percent with group term life rate of point two-one percent, and that's a fixed amount. So if there are any adjustments, the retirement plan rate would be the rate that would change. But the total contribution rate for twenty seventeen is fourteen point two-six percent.
And right now, we're at fourteen point three-three, is that right?
Fourteen point three-three, mhm.
So if we stayed at that, then we would be paying the, that difference would go toward our unfunded?
Right, and our unfunded.
And that's what we've done the past two years, I know.
Mhm, we have. And our unfunded for twenty sixteen was seven million, eight thousand, nine eighty-five.
Tell me again?
Seven million, eight thousand, nine hundred and eighty-five dollars. And.
Seven million, eight ninety-five.
Zero, zero, eight, nine, eight-five.
And currently, our unfunded is eight million, one ninety-two thousand, one hundred ninety-two thousand, three hundred and sixty-two dollars.
So it's gone up?
Yes.
Even though we're paying more?
Mhm.
Do you have the reason, or is that what?
No, I do not, these are the figures I got off of our TCDR website when I was going through and seeing about a COLA for the retirees, and that's the figure that is current.
It's probably because of what investment return they've made on the fund investments.
I would think so.
For instance, if you have a stock market collapse, that eight million could go to twenty million.
Yes, sir.
You know?
And we did try to have Ralph here today from TCDRS, but he's, he was not available, so we're hoping to have him come to one of our future Budget Workshops. He basically told us he wasn't available anytime in the month of July, so it made it hard to talk about this before filing our proposed budget. But we will have him here as soon as we can.
There is a tool on the TCDRS website called the Plan Customizer. And you can go in there and you can kind of play with the numbers to see what your figures would be if you made any changes. And the most that the retirees can get is a one percent flat COLA. And I went and put those figures in. And right now, our unfunded liability, like I said, is eight million, one hundred ninety-two thousand, three hundred and sixty-two dollars with a one percent COLA, which is the max that you can give this year. It is eight million, four hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars, eight hundred, eight million, four hundred and twenty-three thousand, two hundred and three dollars. And the difference between those two amounts is two hundred and thirty thousand, eight hundred and forty-one dollars. And I talked to Mr. Wallace, and he said that you would take that amount, multiply it by the actuary of one point oh-nine, and the amount to do a one percent COLA would be two hundred and fifty-one thousand, six hundred and sixteen dollars and sixty-nine cents.
Say it again.
Two hundred and fifty-one thousand, six hundred and sixteen dollars and sixty-nine cents.
And so that would raise our unfunded amount, but what we could do then is increase our rate to try to.
Yes.
Cover that.
Mhm.
What would our rate have to go up to, do you know?
I have not figured that, no.
No, and Judge, they.
Oh, wait, I, I'm sorry.
Based on what they've got currently.
Um, it would be.
Up all the way through twenty twenty-nine? You could get to twenty percent.
Okay.
Our retirement plan rate, which is fourteen point oh-five right now, would go to fourteen point ten percent. And of course, your group term life rate stays the same. So it'd be total contribution rate presently fourteen point two-six percent, one percent COLA fourteen point three-one percent.
But even at that, it still increases the unfunded amount by two hundred and fifty-one thousand?
Yes.
Any questions? All right, Debbie, anything else?
That's it.
All right, and then you have Ms. Di Tomaso here.
Yes, this is Rosalinda Di Tomaso from Texas Association of Counties. She's gonna talk to about, about the new plan year for our health, dental, and life insurance.
All right, so item C, Presentation and Discussion Regarding Harden County's Group Health Renewal Rates, Changes to Prescription Drug Plan, Pool Performance, and Surplus Distribution. Good morning, ma'am. Thank you.
Well, good morning, my name is Rosalinda Di Tomaso. And I'm a wellness consultant with the Texas Association of Counties. We're based in Austin, Texas, and I serve primarily the southeast territory. And I'm very happy to be here today, and I'm very glad that it was sunny all the way in. I'm gonna be providing some highlights today for your plan year twenty seventeen renewal. I'm just gonna touch on some of the important factors that have been expressed to me as being of interest. And then I'm also going to touch just very, very lightly on some of the wellness aspects of your membership. The Health and Employee Benefits Pool had a very great year. We had a two percent overall renewal, and we have distributed ten million dollars in surplus distribution. And what that means is that as premiums or contributions are collected each month from counties, those go to pay your claims directly, and anything that would be in excess of what your claims were incurred goes directly back to the pool, because the pool is owned by counties. So we'll be talking today about what that surplus distribution is for Harden County. You'll see, if we could go to two slides up, please. You'll see that your plan is the eight-hundred NG plan. What this signifies is that you have a non, I'm sorry, a non-grandfathered plan with a twenty-five dollar copay, a one hundred dollar emergency room copay. Members have a five hundred dollar annual deductible. Once that deductible is met, the plan starts contributing at eighty percent. The member is responsible for twenty percent, so long as they stay in-network, with a twenty-five hundred out-of-pocket maximum for the individual. There's a prescription plan with a ten-dollar generic, a twenty-five dollar copay for a brand drug, and a forty-dollar copay for a non-preferred brand drug. Your plan year twenty seventeen renewal rate, which becomes effective on December first, twenty sixteen, is zero percent. So your rates remain steady at eight hundred and nineteen dollars and seventy-six cents for employee. And then you can see that there, the rates are the same for the remaining three tiers.
It couldn't go down, huh?
Excuse me?
It couldn't go down with it?
I, I, that would be wonderful, and actually, that is our, our effort, is, is to stay below trend. The surplus distribution for Hardy, Harden County was fifty thousand dollars, four hundred and ninety. So again, that means that you paid more into the plan than the claims that were incurred. I've been asked to speak a little bit about how the renewal process takes place with the pool. And just to touch very, very high level on that, we have a team of financial consultants and actuariales who look at all of the claims data for every single county that's in the pool. And what they do is they, they look at your past performance. And so some of the information that I'll be going over next is what your claims have looked like for the last thirty-six months. And I'll also be touching on what your loss ratio is. And then they also determine the impact of any fixed fees that might be absorbed by the plan, and they also look at the trend. The trend for plan year twenty seventeen was seven point five. And this was with a six percent medical and a twelve percent RX. So as I mentioned, the pool renewal rate was two percent, so that, we had a really great year last year. And then each county is individually underwritten by the actuarial team. There's some considerations that are taken into account for each county. Any high-cost claimants, those are considered claims that are shocked, because we, through the actuarial process, can, can say with certainty that there are going to be situations where there's high-cost claimants. We just don't know where they're gonna sit within the pool and which, within which county. So as the renewal rates are taken into consideration, that is a factor that the actuarial team considers. So high-cost claimants in many cases are shocked out, so that that doesn't create an unnecessary spike in your claims. And then also demographic factors and area factors, so the age of your membership, and then also the healthcare network in your area. What we have next is a thirty-six-month plan review, starting from the top line. That's going to give you the most recent twelve months, from May twenty fifteen to April twenty sixteen. So when our financial consultants and actuarial team sit down to discuss renewals, they're going to look at this particular timeframe. And then they're gonna base the renewal on what the plan, how the plan performed during those twelve months. You'll see that you had a two-point-four million-dollar contribution with medical claims paid at about one point nine-eight million and RX at about six hundred and, close to six hundred and eleven thousand. So your overall medical, including medical services and prescription, was about two point five, two point six. In the previous plan year, and actually, the, the previous twenty-four months, you'll see that there were similarities in terms of how the medical plan was utilized. What I wanted to highlight was that in the most recent twelve months, your medical claims did go up and your RX went down. So it's great that there was still a zero percent renewal, and that has a lot in terms of the value of being part of the, the health pool. For the most recent twelve months, your loss ratio was one hundred and five point one-two. We consider an even loss ratio to be around eighty, eighty-five percent, so it's a little on the higher end. Overall, you're trending at about eighty-nine point nine-seven percent for a thirty-six-month loss ratio. I took a look at your claims, just to give you a reflection of how some of the high-cost claimants are falling into what we consider, anything over ten thousand dollars, all the way up, is, is considered a high-cost claimant. This analysis does include any prescription claims that are associated with the members. So you had eighteen members that were over ten thousand, nine members that had healthcare utilization of twenty thousand to forty-nine thousand, five members that were over the fifty thousand dollar mark, and then one member over seventy-five thousand, two that fell over a hundred thousand, and then two members that had healthcare expenses at about two hundred-plus thousand dollars. Some of the additional program elements that I'd like to highlight this year is that your plan year deductible is now aligned with your actual plan year. So in the past, how the deductible plan year would operate was on a calendar year. So as a twelve-one group, your deductible would roll over and begin on January one. Now, we're putting this into effect November one, so as a twelve-one group, your plan year and your benefit year will be the same time period, which should be helpful so that members don't have to calculate and, and try to guess when their deductible is going to take effect. So your deductible and your coinsurance maximums will start over at the same time now on December first. We've also had a, a service called the Benefits Value Advisor that has been offered to the health pool beginning October first of this year. We're actually going to be phasing that program out, so the program's not going to be available. What the Benefits Value Advisor service has provided is, when you call the Blue Cross customer service number, Blue Cross is our contracted network, when you call the customer service number, a Blue Care advisor has been available to answer any questions. We're still providing the same level of customer service, but what we found with the Benefits Value Advisor is that in, unless it was a metropolitan area, there really was not, the investment was not yielding what we had hoped for, for this level of service. The Benefits Value Advisor has been a, a cost estimate type of resource, where a member could call in to Blue Cross and find a radiology facility or a specialty provider in the area to be able to do some cost estimations and some cost comparisons. But we really just have not yielded the return that this investment had intended to provide. So we'll see that program go away. The Affordable Care Act fees that TAC has paid for in the past on behalf of counties will continue to be paid for by TAC. And then also, the Affordable Care Act reporting services, the, these are the IRS annual tax forms that have to be filed. TAC will continue to provide that service on behalf. TAC will continue to provide that service on behalf of um our poll members. Additionally, you may have heard in the news within the past six months that the excise tax or the Cadillac tax has been delayed. And so instead of having that tax go into effect in twenty eighteen, it has been delayed until twenty twenty. So um we're operating under the assumption that the tax is still part of the law. Um, it has just been further delayed. We have some additions to our pharmacy benefit plan that will be effective on October one. Um, and one of these programs is called the Maintenance Ch- Maintenance Choice Phase Two. Since two thousand and fourteen, the Maintenance Choice Program has been a part of the prescription plan coverage. And what this is designed to do is to encourage members to utilize generic equivalent um to the uh prescription that is prescribed by their physician. And additionally, it encourages members to utilize the ninety-day mail order option. What the uh Phase Two program provides is further incentive for the utilization of uh the mail order service. And I'd like to de- just detail why this program is important in terms of um your employees and members that are on the plan. It still provides the option to fill a ninety-day prescription at a CVS or Target pharmacy. But it also encourages members to utilize the mail order. So when you utilize the mail order, you get a ninety-day prescription for the cost of a sixty-day prescription. So the value to the member is that you're saving a one month of a copay. So we went through um what your prescription plan coverage is. Let's say you have a ten-dollar um generic medication. If you fill that monthly at the retail pharmacy, you're gonna pay ten dollars every month for a thirty-day fill. If you utilize the mail order or if you fill your medication at a CVS pharmacy or a Target pharmacy, you're going to get a ninety-day supply for twenty dollars as opposed to thirty dollars. So there's definitely a financial um incentive to utilize this program. Additionally, what uh what the research shows is that when a member has access to a ninety-day medication, they're more likely to adhere to that medication, which has a great benefit if you're managing a chronic condition such as high blood pressure or high cholesterol. Um, I like to use my father as an example. They live in California and they came to visit over the holidays and he had stopped taking his blood pressure medication because he felt fine. And then when you get up into um airspace at much higher altitude, he really started to feel um not great. And so I asked him, Dad, what you know, what's going on? And he said, well, I I've I felt great, so I stopped taking my medication. Um, and so even though individuals might feel well, if they're on a medication that's been prescribed by a physician, we strongly encourage that they adhere to their physician's orders. Um, so the Maintenance Choice Phase Two provides an incentive for individuals to utilize the retail pharmacy at CVS or Target or utilize the mail order. The prescription must be written for a ninety-day script. Um, one of the things to note about Phase Two is that if the member after the second time, if they go to a non-CVS um retail pharmacy um for a maintenance medication, they would start to incur a one-point-five um their copay is gonna increase by one-point-five. So they're gonna pay fifteen dollars instead of ten dollars for a thirty-day supply. Additionally, we have an enhanced specialty drug formulary. This is specific to specialty medications. This is another um piece of healthcare news that has been um hitting the newspapers and televisions as far as specialty drugs. These medications, as healthcare evolves, are designed to specifically um address genetic and um very specialized rare conditions. These medications are also very costly. Um, the TAC Health and Employee Benefits Pool does not have a separate tier for specialty medications like many other health plans. Um, we have the same level of tier generic brand name in non-preferred brand drugs. Um, and the current formulary, the specialty medications fall within a no- a non-preferred big brand drug. And so you're gonna pay a little bit more for these medications. What this particular program has done is it has put a um it's it has expanded the availability from five therapeutic classes to twelve therapeutic classes. And the formulary will be updated quarterly rather than annually. Um, so if anybody is on a specialty medication, um they're gonna be grandfathered into this new formulary. And starting ten-one, um the formulary is gonna be expanded from five therapeutic classes to twelve classes. And um I mentioned the Cadillac tax, it's something to be aware of. Um, and so we're just operating as if it is. One of the things to note about the Cadillac tax is that there's a penalty, a forty percent tax that is incurred when an individual coverage reaches eight hundred and fifty dollars per month. And um and so we're monitoring that closely. Um, based on your current renewal rate, you are um below that by just a just a hair. You're at eight nineteen. Um, and so one of the things that I'd like to um wrap up this discussion talking about is chronic conditions and particularly how I'm available to serve the county. In my role at the Texas Association of Counties, I work specifically around um wellness. What how your plan is performing in terms of how individuals are utilizing healthcare? What type of care are people seeking? What types of chronic conditions do people have? Um, and how can we build support around them so that any chronic conditions an individual may have, there's support available to interface with a physician to manage a chronic condition through condition management at the home, through a clinical setting? Um, and then also, how do we get employees up and moving and active and thinking about nutrition and and different lifestyle factors that influence health outcomes? What we have here is a um a review. When you look at all of the claims data for Harden County, we're looking at the opportunity to mediate increasing costs through wellness. So wellness in my in my um eye should be viewed as a cost containment strategy. We certainly want to encourage employees to um adopt healthy lifestyle behaviors on their own. But we also provide support through the Healthy County Program that is available to members that are enrolled in Harden County's health plan. One of the things when I look at this, um you your average membership is two-hundred-and-ninety and fifty percent fifty-seven percent of your membership has one or more chronic conditions with the um greatest number of individuals being impacted by high cholesterol and high blood pressure. And so we wanna manage those conditions, again, through medication adherence if a physician has prescribed medications to manage these conditions. We also want um to have our pulse on these conditions because um high blood pressure and high cholesterol are contributing factors to heart disease and then catastrophic events, which you're gonna see show up in your high-cost claimants. So I just wanted to highlight this um as something that I'm keeping um a pulse on. And I would definitely um encourage the the court to consider ways that we can partner together to further look at claims and utilization, to look at how members are um managing conditions, preventing conditions. What this shows here, this is a paid per member per month by diagnostic category. What a diagnostic category is, is just a clinical um form of coding that groups conditions into a particular diagnostic category. So your your highest um overall paid expense across inpatient, outpatient, and professional setting would be circulatory, um and then followed by musculoskeletal and then endocrine. So again, you're seeing the high blood pressure, the high cholesterol. You're probably seeing some um back issues and then also diabetes fall into those categories. So we're just gonna continue to keep an eye um on these conditions and try to identify ways to partner with the county. Are there any questions about your renewal, surplus distribution, new pharmacy programs, utilization of your plan?
On the uh pharmacy, um does CVS know with our plans to recommend the ninety day? I mean, I know that's something we work with our doctors on, but is it something that CVS could enact as well?
Yes, sir. So we do have um uh CVS Caremark is your pharmacy benefit manager for the pool. And so we do have a system in place that if there is a medication that could potentially be filled at a ninety-day fill, there would be some outreach to the physician. And then alternatively, there could be some outreach to the individual um because we certainly wanna offer that benefit to the member. It's a cost-saving to the individual and it's also a cost-saving to the plan and in turn, a cost-saving to the county.
I got a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, does CVS and Target, do they contribute to this insurance or anything?
No, ma'am.
Why are you soliciting business for them? Why can't we go to another drug store?
Um, you can certainly go to another pharmacy, but the pharmacy-
That wasn't for the ninety-day deal.
Um, the incentive would be to to utilize mail order. So this is when you're submitting your prescription to the mail order service and it's delivered to your home by mail. Um, or conversely, utilizing a CVS or a Target. So the incentive is to really steer individuals to the ninety-day-
Well, I'd like to do the ninety days, but I'm not changing my I've been there twenty-five years and I don't know why I should have to go to CVS or Target if they're not contributing to us. Why did y'all pick me?
They are part of the pharmacy benefit network. The there we have an entire um company that manages the pharmaceutical benefit. The value of um bringing this to have a discussion today is because we're seeing pharmacy benefits have a much higher trend than medical. Um, on one of the slides, I believe medical was at six percent and pharmacy was at twelve percent. Um, especially with specialty medications, the pharmacy trend is much higher. As a way to contain cost and to be able to um really support the county in being able to offer the best benefits, the rich benefit package that is available and to continue to fund it at the levels that are being funded, we have to put some cost containment strategies in place um because it's a very encouraging discussion today to have some options to discuss. I would hate to have a discussion with the court that that is your rates are so high, how is that cost going to be shifted to the members? So we're we're trying to be proactive. Um, and so this is one of those programs. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, any other pharmacy, uh get with the system with with them if they want to?
Um, that would have to be um I we're not part of the negotiations as far as the network. That would be a CVS pharmacy.
They do have the options.
Um, I am not sure, to be honest with you. I'm not sure how how that is negotiated with um with the pharmacy benefit manager. Um, on the back of your benefits card, you do have a um a a customer service number for Blue Cross. And then there's also a customer service number for your um prescription plan. You're certainly encouraged to call that phone number and identify how this program would impact any of the prescriptions that you have. Um, the pharmacy plan is gonna be better qualified and more informed than trying to figure this out with your physician's office. Um, so I would certainly recommend that.
I I have a comment or a question.
Yes, sir.
If if our medical cost, drug cost for the next two years would replicate this year, then we'd be looking at significant premium increases, I would think.
I would definitely um take note of this now. Um, and and that is one of the reasons why I feel like it's such a privilege to be here to talk to you about not only just your rates, but overall how the plan is being utilized. Um, and again, operating with the assumption that the excise tax is um on the horizon in twenty twenty. There are um strategies that we have put in place with um specific counties that are at the cusp of meeting or or above that eight-hundred-and-fifty-dollar-a-month threshold. Um, and that involves a wellness incentive program for covered employees. You're tying your wellness activities like an annual exam or enrollment in condition management to manage those chronic con- conditions to your benefit plan. Um, and then there's also um one way that I can provide support is to just continually monitor how the plan is being utilized and get ahead of um you know, what's what we might be expecting to see next next year. Yes, sir.
Frisalinda, is there any way to with our members that uh that TAC has anything? And maybe we already do it to um communicate either via email or uh through the US Post Office directly to our members with suggestions on wellness? Uh, any type of newsletters to let them know, you know, what could be forthcoming? If if it continues to increase, then the cost would be shifted to the employee or is there any way to communicate that through you guys?
Um, we do have a monthly what what we call Healthy By It. It's an electronic newsletter and it provides um it's it's you visit our website, county.org. Um, and then when you visit Healthy County, you'll see that there's a subscription option there. What we communicate in that monthly newsletter are programs that are available to members. Um, and we certainly have communications that are geared towards um condition management, ways to stay healthy, other services that are part of the benefits package. We do have a communication campaign that's coming around specifically around uh the prescription um changes. And as part of our open enrollment toolkits, we do have communication. So we can certainly partner um with the county to identify the best strategy to be able to communicate some of these to your members.
That would be great.
Absolutely.
All right, does anybody else have any other questions or comments? Anyone in the audience? All right, ma'am. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
All right, item D, as other departments is necessary. And I think uh Ms. Stevens, I had asked you about uh if you had any information that you could present to us. We had talked, I think, once or twice about some changes coming up with the DMV. And that's gonna cause some uh changes to the uh tax office. So I wanted to bring that to everyone's attention and let us all get on the same page regarding that. And then you also have the uh information that you provided to us this morning on the effective tax rate. And I wanna give the commissioners a chance to ask any questions on that if they're already.
Okay. Uh, to begin with, on our fees that we collect, the county fees that we collect for DMV, those fees will uh we will be losing some of those fees. The state has uh decided they need some of those fees worse than we do. So they're going to be reducing those fees when our within our office. And it will change up uh some of the ways that we handle renewals and titles in the office. But we will be losing fees. Um, James White has addressed this for us in our recent conference. Uh, it was su- a very, very sore topic because the counties were very upset that the state was going to be implementing this.
And is it a certain percentage or how's it how's it uh?
It's a, well, actually, uh whereas we were getting like two dollars and twenty-five cents per um online registration, we won't be getting anything. Because any online registration in the future will go through Austin, bypass the counties altogether. So therefore, they're cutting out any fees that the county would have gotten.
Does this come out of uh legislation from last session?
Yes, sir.
When it's taken effect, what date?
Uh, it is, the best I can tell, it will begin September the first.
And you said you heard Representative White comment on this?
Yes, sir. He is uh he is backing the Tax Assessor Collector Association. The counties uh may be having some changes done that changes could be done where the counties would not be losing as much funding.
Sure, is there any way to uh give a guess at how many dollars we might be talking about?
Well, I'm wasn't aware that we were gonna talk about this today, but I had actually done a calculation myself. And uh I certainly would have brought it with me had I known we were going to discuss- And, uh, I certainly would have brought it with me had I known we were going to discuss this.
Well, you can give us this before we put our budget together this-
Yes sir.
Or give it to the judge because-
I can give you a, um, just an estimate of lost on this.
With that in mind, the idea, and I know you are retiring and not going to be with us after, uh, December, but with that in mind, with the idea of wanting to, uh, do satellite locations, uh, those fees that we would actually be collecting or have collected in the past in these satellite locations, that would no longer go to the county.
Or they would, right, all of it would not go to the county.
So other than us providing, uh-
Walk-in services? I mean, they're cutting, they're cutting the mail, anything that comes through the mail, they will be cutting some of that. The main thing that they're cutting out is the online registrations. And they are cutting those drastically.
But even if someone comes in to renew, they're cutting the percentage that the county normally gets from that as well?
They will cut some of that, yes sir.
And then the mail order-
And I do have, um, something put together and I would have loved to have brought it today. But, uh, and they're just, you know, they're bringing more down to county locations, uh, beginning September. We're supposed to start policing the, uh, child support, you might say. And, uh, I am totally against that.
Well, that's, that's what they do every session.
Oh, they do.
That's the way they send out their letters, say, "We've cut your taxes."
Mm-hmm.
They've cut what the state charges them.
That's right, they've cut-
Well, I find it interesting in that area there that we have a majority of Republicans up there and then we get legislation like this coming down and they want to blame it on somebody else. So we, we got to find out, I mean, our, our state legislator made a meeting in Jasper County and said, "You need to hold your county, uh, elected officials, uh, responsible." Well, I think we need to hold our state elected officials responsible. We got a majority of Republicans up there and we get legislation like this, they want to blame it on the Democrats? I don't think so.
Well, it, it's, uh, it is hurting the counties. It certainly is. In fact, um, the lady that was presenting this, um, at our conference, uh, well, let's just say she finally walked off the podium and left. Because, uh, the association was just so upset that the state would do this.
Well, if you spend much time with the legislature, what you'll find is the battle is more rural versus urban.
Yeah, that's probably what it boils down to.
Than it is Republican versus Democrat.
Austin.
Because if a representative represents East Texas rural type areas, they're very sensitive to this. But if they come from Houston down to San Antonio, Austin, those metroplexes, they want money. They want the state to get more money. And they've got to get it somewheres and they don't want to vote for a tax increase, so they're going to take it from fees and stuff that counties.
Right.
That's what you find out. And rural interests are not controlling the legislature anymore.
But the last I looked, it had a surplus. That they like to boast on everybody's stuff.
We're proud of that, yeah. I'm sorry I didn't give you more notice on that, but, uh, if we could have obtained that information from me, then we'll get it out to everybody.
That's okay, that's okay. Now, I have put together, um, a spreadsheet, um, showing just kind of an estimate of how it would affect us. And, um, I'll get that to you.
Right.
Okay, now on the, um, tax rate?
Tax rate? Yes ma'am.
I'm showing that, um, your effective tax rate is point four five seven one three seven. If you adopt that rate, that's going to give you the same amount of revenue as you had last year. Now, um, we're all aware that minerals have been down, however, uh, there has been a drastic increase in property, in, uh, land and in values in Harding County. And so that did bring our values up this year, which brought our tax rate down. Now the, um-
Now, when you say there's been a drastic increase in property?
Well, in the appraisal, in the appraised value of property, yes sir.
And that's what I'm hearing from taxpayers all over the county is.
Uh, the main areas hit, uh, were Wildwood, Pinewood, Abstract Thirty-eight, Abstract Thirty. Um, and I believe they said Crestwood, maybe, uh, was some of the areas that were hit the most. Now, out of all the members on the Board of Directors at the appraisal district, uh, every one of us, of course, we're from all different areas of the county, we all received tax, uh, value increases. So they did a pretty good look over in the county, the appraisal district did, and then the values did increase. Now, the rollback, uh, tax rate is point six two four three oh five. Now, if you go with the point five seven one three seven, you could adopt that and not have to have any public hearings. But anything over that, you would have to have a public, two public hearings.
So if we stuck with our point five seven six two, our current rate, we need to have two public hearings?
You would have to have a public, you would have to have two public hearings. And, and let me say this, right after I got in office, Mr. Pelton and I disagreed on, uh, can y'all believe that? We disagreed.
The Commissioner Cooper.
Now, when, when I, when I look at this, I'm saying if you go above point five seven one, you have a tax increase. Well, because, but however, because the tax rate stayed the same for several years, coming from Mr. Pelton's point of view, there was no tax rate increase. But coming from my point of view, yes, there was a tax rate increase.
Wait, wait a minute, let's, let's get down to, let's get down to meaning words. There was no tax increase. There was a tax rate increase, but no tax increase.
There was a tax rate increase. However, it would cause a tax increase.
But the county collects the same amount of taxes. It's always what's the meaning of it is.
Yeah, now we can-
Well, that's, that's a very touching, uh, subject, especially with, uh, citizens having their, uh, appraisal values increased and then we say, "Well, we, we've tried to keep the tax rate the same." Well, the taxes has increased, but you know, I get that every day, but, uh-
But the appraisals have, uh, they have gone up. Now, um, this, and I'm, and I'm certainly not endorsing this meeting. I do plan on being there tonight, but, uh, there is a, James White will be just, uh, holding a meeting tonight regarding the appraised values.
Where at?
At Bible Baptist Church at six o'clock.
No sir, I'm not aware of it.
Yeah.
If he starts asking why your, uh, judge and commissioners are not there, we weren't invited.
Yeah. We had a room that, yeah.
Now, he will be, and, and, uh, that's-
I just think we ought to go on record to let him know that none of the local officials even knew about that meeting. Cause that's crock. You can quote that in the paper if you want to.
Well, if you're on here, if you sign up for his email newsletter, you'll get, you'll get-
Right, now, I had, I'm, that's the reason I received it.
You sure don't mind hitting us up for our end.
Exactly right.
And that's bad.
Well, what's happening is, is the state is passing down unfunded mandates to the county in the same way Washington is to Austin. And, uh, our representative now has a reputation of going in, talking with citizens and calling out the county governments. When the county governments didn't know the meetings were even going to happen. And if you're going to get thrown onto the bus, it'd be good to know that you're going to get thrown onto the bus. But we are at difference of opinions with our state legislatures and, and, uh, that, uh, you know, they come in and boast of a multi-billion dollar surplus when we're down here trying to talk on how to give you guys a raise in retirement.
Interesting.
We're cutting pennies. Yeah, I mean, we're, we're-
And that's why most everybody needs to be in the streets.
I do appreciate you telling us about that meeting, cause that, that kind of rubs me the wrong way. But anyway, that's not part of the commissioners' court.
Ms. Stevens, so that, uh, I think I have a clear understanding, but just for the record, our effective is going to be point five seven one. We're currently at point five seven six. The rollback is point six two four. And what that basically says, you're saying if we leave it where we're at now, because it's above the effective, we have to have a public hearing.
Yes sir. If you, right, yes sir.
Or rollback, if we went above point six two four, the citizens could have a rollback election. Is that correct?
Right, that is correct.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
I, I don't think we're going close to that.
No, I don't either. I'm just trying to get in perspective here.
One question to have that's relevant to this is, that's not including certificates, right? The certificate of obligation?
The fifty-seven cents?
The fif- fifty-seven one on the annex, is that including what we'll do on the annex that could in- increase?
Yes sir.
It is, it is counting that?
That's going to.
Or that fifty-seven one is taken into consideration?
The fifty-seven one is taken that into consideration.
Shirley, you mentioned, uh, several communities. Even if we go to the five, point five seven one three seven one to bring in the same amount of revenue, their taxes are going to increase.
Yes sir, they are. Yes sir.
That's the way they look at it. They don't care about that.
That's right.
Yeah.
And, and they're basically looking at, at the commissioners and the tax office that, you know, y'all raised my taxes.
Well, we're responsible for putting people on that board is what I hear, you know?
Well, that's true. However, now let me, uh, let me explain this, uh, let me explain this about the board. Now, the only, uh, jurisdiction that the board has, the Board of Directors, is the hiring and firing of a chief appraiser. We, uh, the actual appraisal part is governed by the Texas Department of-
That's what I want to make sure was clear on that board does not set the appraisal.
No, we do not. We just, all the, the only authority we have is hiring and firing of the appraisal, chief appraiser.
In fact, you're not supposed to try to influence those appraisals.
No, that's right. No, sir.
If I understand it correctly, the reason for the big increases is because they're, the formula that the state has set has not been abided by in the past, so that's why.
And you've got a, part of the state law is that if the appraisal district does not stay at ninety-five percent of true market value, then the school districts get their revenue of your state cut.
Right. They lose their, right, they get, they lose their revenue.
The state's got all kind of ways they've got you hemmed in on these things.
And the comptroller, they are doing, they were very diligent in their, um, auditing of the appraisal district. So.
Let me ask this, if, uh, when a home is either, um, sold or purchased or built or whatever, all that information is not disclosed to the appraisal district, so that's why we have the appraisals the way that they're done. Is that correct? And we're just one of the few states that non-disclose that information?
Now, we're getting into, uh, uh, the appraisal district side of it and I'm not sure regarding that.
But if we disclose that information, it would make it a lot easier to, uh, do appraisals.
I do know that, um, right, if, if you would honestly disclose that to the appraisal district, if you would render your property to the appraisal district, you know, but people are not aware that they need to do that. No.
Well, it is still legal to have a deed that says for ten and no one hundred dollars and other good and valuable considerations. That's state, you know, s- what the judge is talking about, that has been proposed at the state level, but it's been knocked down.
And I think there's only fifteen states and we're one of them that don't disclose that information? At the time of a sale or purchase? It sure seems like that would simplify things.
It certainly would.
It would simplify for the appraisal district.
Right.
But it would also cause a lot of taxes to jump.
Now, I will say this, that, uh, those, uh, taxpayers that are in Coontz and Harden Jefferson due to this new legislation with the twenty-five thousand dollar, uh, those entities are going to have to go back and put their optional, uh, homestead back on there, which will affect, uh, will affect you, Mr. Pelton, and, uh, who else?
Not really.
It'll happen a little bit.
I believe mine are frozen, aren't they?
Yes sir, they should be frozen.
Don't spread that.
We're talking only on homestead.
We, we're just talking now.
That's all I own is a homestead. But that, that, uh, that would make the people in the Harden Jefferson District happy because there's been a lot of dissatisfaction when they took that off.
Well, I believe it was Coontz and Harden Jefferson were the only two that had it. And when they removed it, they, the Attorney General said that couldn't do it. So that helps them. Okay, have any more questions?
No, thank you.
I don't.
Now, I'm, you know, I love talking this stuff. But, uh, it's getting close to lunchtime.
We sure do appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I want to, uh, say again how much we appreciate all of the retirees being here. It's good to see some people that we hadn't got to see in a while and, and, uh, hope you didn't think you wasted your time here today. But, uh, if there's anything that anyone else would like to address the court with, we're glad to hear it.
Telling a, uh, a young employee coming into Harden County now that the pay's not good, but the retirement is great, are we telling them a lie? Cause, you know, uh, in county government, that's the only thing we got going for us is a good retirement.
That's, that's not really true now, that it's a lie. For the simple reason that Harden County matches two hundred percent. And there's not a lot of counties that match two hundred percent. So I wouldn't want that to go out of here that, because that was a pretty big decision at the time it was made, and of course, I'm looking at Rachel and, and some others here, that was an employee decision. When we had to do something about insurance, the employees overwhelmingly made the decision that they would have the money, rather have the two hundred percent funding by the county on retirement rather than having to pay more premiums on their insurance, that county pay more premiums. So Harden County did bite a bullet back there and give us two hundred percent. And that's the reason that we have to look very close at this unfunded mandate because it's always ahead of some future court.
Yeah.
Harden County has a, you, you, there are many counties that it could be one to one match, it could be one to five, and Harden County's only two to one. And when I go to Continued Education, these conferences, there are very few counties that are contributing two dollars. There were one dollar the employees contribute.
Where were we on before? One to one?
One to one.
And it went to two to one?
Yeah. And that greatly enhances your-
Yeah, we do appreciate y'all considering it.
Yeah. Well, Nancy, Nancy was here and most of the people here were at the time the decision was made and, uh, you know, I think the court did a great thing for the, for the retirees, but it does cost money.
Don't anybody make a motion to adjourn here. We got, we got two more things. First of all, we need to have a, uh, special meeting later this week on Thursday to adopt the proposed budget and the proposed tax rate. And I had asked about doing it before lunch, but I think Commissioner Cooper's got a meeting, so, and I know Commissioner Kirkendall's trying to leave town, so what time's good for everybody? What time's your meeting over with?
Ten o'clock. Well, it starts in this transportation meeting at Southeast Texas we were planning.
Do we have to have all commissioners or judges?
We don't have to, but it's the proposed budget. I, I, if anybody wants to miss, that's certainly fine. We can do it with three, but I don't want to, I don't want to set it for a time that somebody can't be here that they want to come. Is, uh, one o'clock good?
Yes.
Is that good for you? Everybody else?
Good for me.
So we'll set a special meeting for this Thursday at one o'clock and we got time to post it. Yeah, we'll post that by one today and have that meeting for the proposed budget and proposed tax rate. And then on Monday, the first, I'd like to recommend a nine o'clock special meeting to discuss the departments that we postponed that had, uh, salary increase request. Uh, can we be ready to talk to them on Monday, the first? So we'll set that for eight one at nine AM.
Okay, now, are-
That's just a budget workshop along with anything else that-
When, when is, when are we going to get a proposed budget?
We should have that for you by the end of the day tomorrow.
Okay, so we'll be able to look at it with, with the losses that, Shirley, can you give him the proposed losses to take out of what the proposed gain was?
Get that out, take that other revenue line out of it.
So that we'll have the information we need to make a decision on that.
Yes sir. We were hoping to have it ready today, but we just didn't. But we've got a few things left to, to update. We'll get that done. Receive the information from Shirley and try to have it to you, maybe even by noon tomorrow, but I'm going to say by the end of the day. All right, anything further?
Move adjourned.
Have a motion by Commissioner Cooper and a second by Commissioner Kirkendall. We adjourned. Yeah, uh, probably about sixty and we can bring it to you. We'll send it by email if you want to.